All right, with it being right at seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. Join, can you take roll call?
Council members Erickson.
President.
Larson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Council member Valento is absent, and Mayor Roberts.
Here. If you're able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I'm looking for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Better agenda. Number five, awards and recognations and presentations. Just want to mention first, before we get to the first item, there's, council member Valento had a baby boy back on June 2nd. So on behalf of the council and city, congratulate her and Luke on that. And so she will be absent from a couple of meetings here this month, but going to be keeping track of her emails and watching meetings. So if you still have a reason to reach out to her, she's more than willing to take those. Next item. Some of you may be aware that Pat Silovich, the commander of the American Legion, had passed away last week. So tonight, the Forest Lake City Council pauses to recognize and honor the life and legacy of Pat Silovich, commander of the Forest Lake American Legion. Pat was a respected veteran who served as an Air Force traffic control officer. He was a dedicated community leader and steadfast supporter for all those who served for our country. In his role as commander of the American Legion 225, Pat led with a quiet strength, deep compassion, and unwavering commitment to honoring and supporting veterans and their families. As commander, Pat brought honor to the American Legion at Forest Lake through his unwavering commitment to veterans and their families, and the core values of freedom, patriotism, and unity. His leadership, compassion, integrity made a lasting impact not just within the Legion, but across our city. Pat's impact reached far beyond the walls of the Legion. He was constant presence at local events, parades, and ceremonies, always showing up for Forest Lake, always standing for those who served. He served our youth by always stepping up to volunteer for coaching football, basketball, and baseball. The city council extends heartfelt condolences to Pat's family, his fellow legionnaires, and all who had the honor of knowing him. His contributions to our community will not be forgotten, and we are forever grateful for his life of service. We honor Pat Silovich with deep respect, lasting gratitude, and I, Blake Roberts, as mayor of Forest Lake hereby declare Friday, June 13th, 2025, Commander Pat Silovich Day in the city of Forest Lake. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next item, open forum. This gives anyone an opportunity to come speak on any city issue. Please state your name and your address, and limit it to three minutes or so. Susan Young.
Hi, my name is Susan Young, 9950 199th Street North in Forest Lake. I'd like to address the parking issue on North Shore Trail. Those of you, several of you are longstanding community members, know that parking and noise and stuff at that property as far back as Willowbrook have been issues forever and ever and ever, amen. The planning commission saw several iterations for different businesses of that property. And yes, the property as stated in your packet has not been completely in accordance with every portion of our zoning code or our plan. However, the planning commission worked very hard with the owners to let them know this is what is available on the property through the various owners. This is the parking that is available, and were assured at the last iteration that they understood the parking and that they were going to have boat access and snowmobile access that was going to be a significant part of their business plan. The, I have several issues with the city providing parking, partially funding. Those include, one, as a parent, I try not to reward behavior that was outside my rules. And when a business is rewarded for having done something that was outside the rules and comes in on the very last day before consequences, that concerns me. I have serious concerns about, and I brought them to this council a year ago, about how does the council choose which businesses they will provide a monetary benefit to, whether it's a sale at lower than market rates of property, or if it is helping to pave an area on North Shore. How does the city decide who we help with dollars, taxpayer dollars, and who we don't? If that is going to be the policy of the council, I really would like for you all to consider a rubric, how are we going to do that? Finally, that parking plan on that stretch of North Shore Trail, in my experience, is going to be a recipe for disaster. After a long, hard day, if I go someplace for an evening, I may not be at 110% when I back onto a busy street. The city is wonderfully going to be paving North Shore Trail. That will increase speeds. Unfortunately, we won't have to slow down for the potholes. That parking is going to be a huge issue from a safety perspective. And those of you will remember that we used to have trouble with people parking on the other side of the street in the homeowners' yards. If we have designated parking on one side of the street, it's going to encourage more folks to park in those, because they say, well, it's on that side of the street, we can certainly go on this side of the street. For many reasons, I need to be respectful of time. This is not a good idea. I am strongly not in favor of this. I'm hoping that you will reconsider the staff recommendation. You buy a business, you don't say, how can I ask the city to fix my business plan? And then finally, if the council decides that the fact that the planning commission said, yes, you may have a business here with restrictions, but they are still a non-conforming use. The planning commission has for a very long time said, as you come forward with something, if you are going to reduce the nonconformance of your nonconforming use, we'll work with you. I would have to talk to the planning commission and say, this is probably not a good idea for the future, knowing where the position of the council is. I don't want the planning commission to be in that sort of position in the future. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Roxanne Keller.
Hello, I'm Roxanne Keller, and I live at 20277 345th Street, Taylor's Falls. I've been at the Arts in the Park for the last five, six years, and I've always been in this one spot that I've always been at. Well, since he got a new person that's running it now, he has really changed everything up. And he has put me in a spot that, by the gazebo, that I cannot sell my jewelry that I make. I do wire wrapping of natural stones, and to be able to talk to all my customers. So he tried moving me around to different places, and it's still not the right location. And the last one, he had me put by this big old green box with the cement layer or whatever. And I can't put my canopy there and stuff to be able to work on it. I went there last Tuesday, and I checked out how he set up everything. In my opinion, it's not the greatest. And so I did on my application request for my same spot as I always have. And so I didn't get it because he rearranged everything. So I've been on the conversation with him on the phone, everything. And he said that I would have to come to a council meeting to request my $200 back from my application. So that's why I'm here for that. So that's where it stands.
Okay, thank you. We can have some conversation after that, a little bit on that?
We could. I would encourage you not to address that issue tonight. I would just push that to the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. Jackie KDB, is this part of the, so, okay, all right. David Swan.
We're here to represent the Pizza Pub. And sorry, I was brought into this last minute to stand in for Jerry, but we are requesting some additional parking along the Boulevard and on the North Shore Trail to accommodate the influx of customers during the busy season, during the summer months. He's already made, I mean, a lot of folks have already parking on the Boulevard because of the restricted space that's available in the lot itself.
Okay, yeah, and we might have some questions as that comes up the agenda. All right, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
So I'm taking the motion to approve the consent agenda, item 7A through P.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Our regular agenda item, first one, 2024 audit presentation acceptance. Jessica. Okay. Great, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me this evening. I'm going to be going over a summary of the results of our audit and also the 2024 operating results. And I'm Jackie Knowles with Bergen KDB. The main purpose of our audit is to provide our independent auditor's report. In this report, we state management's responsibility, which is for the numbers within the financial statements. And our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on those statements based on the results of our test work. This year, we're providing an unmodified or a clean opinion. It's the best that we can offer in the same that the city has been receiving. What that does is it provides assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, the activity that occurred within 2024, and the financial position as of December 31st, 2024. We are also required to provide a report on Minnesota legal compliance. That's required by the Office of the State Auditor to test for compliance with certain state statutes applicable to Minnesota cities, and we did not have any findings there. And then finally, as a result of our test work, we did have one internal control finding. It is a repeat finding, the lack of segregation of accounting duties due to one person having the ability to handle multiple steps in a transaction process. So with that, we'll move on to some of the financial results for the year. And we'll start with a look at the general funds budget. For 2024, the council approved a budget calling for almost 12.5 million in revenue. And expenditures were authorized at an equal amount, which created a balanced budget. Actual revenues came in at almost $13 million. That's an over-budget variance of about $506,000. Expenditures came in at 11.94 million. That's an under-budget variance of about $542,000. And total fund balance increased just over $1 million as a result of 2024 activity. Here's a graph that shows total fund balance over the last five years. So you can see that increase in 2024. In the unassigned portion of fund balance, that's the piece that's available for spending on any purpose. At the end of the year, that was $7,222,000. And that is an important number, because that's the number that's addressed in the city's policy. And that number is equal to 54.7% of the 2025 budgeted expenditures. And that is in compliance with the city's policy to maintain an unassigned fund balance of 50% of the subsequent year's total budgeted expenditures in the general fund. When we look at revenues for the past five years, we do see some variances. And that is primarily due to the amount of intergovernmental revenues coming into the general fund, which have varied due to the timing of federal pandemic-related funding. In 2024, total revenues increased almost 10%, or about $1.1 million over the 2023 amount due to an increase in tax revenues with an increase in the amount levied in the general fund. Intergovernmental revenues were also up about $200,000 with an increase in police training reimbursement grants, and then also the local government aid entitlement received by the city. When we look at the allocation of revenues over the last couple of years in these pie charts, it just illustrates that as total revenues have increased, it has been spread evenly across the various sources. And here we have some more detail on that budget-to-actual results. And as I mentioned earlier, total revenues were over budget, about half a million dollars in total. About $200,000 of that variance was in the other category due to conservative budgeting for interest earnings and the change in fair market value of the city's investments. Another $200,000 was in intergovernmental due to conservative budgeting for the police training aid and then the fire relief pension aid, which flows through to the Relief Association. And then finally, across licenses and permits and charges for services, together, those came in over budget about $166,000, primarily due to conservative budgeting for building permits and plan check fees. Moving on to expenditures, in total, expenditures increased about $403,000 from 2023 to 2024. And the majority of that increase was in public safety, which is the largest general fund program. That increased about $329,000, or about 4.7%. And that was due to a number of different things. First of all, for the police department, cost of living in step increases, as well as a severance payout. Fire wages also increased, and the state fire pension aid amount that flows through to the Relief Association increased. And then also, building inspection consulting services were up. General government expenditures were up almost a quarter of, about a quarter of a million dollars due to an increase in professional services, including personnel search and computer support services. And then partially offsetting those increases, we see a decrease in capital outlay. That was $0 in 2024. All of the capital purchases were paid for out of different funds, including the Capital Equipment Fund and the Main Capital Improvement Fund. Here we have some pie charts for expenditures as well, also illustrating very consistent spending allocations among the various programs or functions of the city over the last couple of years. And then budget-to-actual results for expenditures. Again, expenditures under budget about $542,000, or about 4.3% in total. Some of the programs with larger variances, Public Works, under budget about $240,000, primarily due to less snowfall than anticipated. Economic Development, under budget across wages, legal fees, and other professional services. General Government was under budget, primarily due to staffing changes resulting in lower salaries and benefits than anticipated. And then one program that was over budget, Public Safety, over budget about $120,000, primarily due to building inspection consulting services coming in over budget. And we saw that on the revenue side, too, with the building permits and the plan check fees revenues coming in more than budget, too. And with that, we'll move on to the Water Fund. Operating revenues did decrease in 2024, about 5% due to less irrigation during the summer months, and that is in line with what we're seeing at other cities this year. Operating expenses were up about $87,000 across wages and depreciation expense taken on capital assets. This fund did report operating income of about $741,000 in 2024. And in the Sewer Fund, operating revenues were up about $219,000 with increases in rates and usage. Operating expenses were up a similar amount across wages, repairs and maintenance, depreciation expense, and sewage disposal fees, so kind of across the board. Operating income in this fund totaled about $655,000 in 2024. And my last graph takes a look at the city's tax capacity levy and rates over the last five years. So the city's total tax capacity has increased each of the last five years with larger increases in 2023 and 2024 as market values have increased. The city's tax levy has increased at a very consistent rate. So we do see some variances in the tax capacity rate over the last five years because of the uneven increases in the total tax capacity. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just have a couple of comments, and maybe Jackie could fill us in on a few of these things, or just expand on them a little bit. One of them, there was, I think, in the revenue portion, you were looking at the increase in revenue, and you mentioned the value of our investments. I think that's always a tricky one to understand, the mark-to-market aspect of this. I don't know if that changed a few years back. I can't remember if it's always been something that has been shown on audits. But I don't, I know it's proper accounting, and they're doing their job correctly. I don't like it because it shows something that's not, won't be, and 99.9% of the cases won't ever be a realized revenue or a realized loss in some years. And so this is where we have to show the actual value of the stocks we own, the mutual funds that we're invested in, even though we would never cash those, never is a strong term, but very, very rarely would we cash those out and actually take that gain or loss because it's not what we're invested for. We're invested for the longer term, right? And so the audit needs to show that as a revenue, but it's not what I would call a, I'm probably not using the proper term, a realized revenue, right? It's not actually money, quote-unquote, "in the bank." Does that make sense? Am I characterizing that properly?
Yeah, so government entities are required to record investments at their fair market value. So there may be an unrealized gain, as we saw in 2024. Some years, we see an unrealized loss, even though it is the city's intention to hold those to maturity.
Does that make sense? So you buy a million-dollar CD, call it, you intend to hold that through the life of it and then cash it out when you're done. It'll be a zero-sum gain except for the interest you made. And we're properly reporting the interest, not properly. We're always doing everything properly here. But the interest makes sense to see that coming in as revenue, right? But the gain and the value or the loss in the value, I try to ignore that. Do you know what that number off the top of your head was?
I don't off the top of my head, no.
So then, another thing to note was that, you know, there was an increase. We were, quote-unquote, "over budget" on building inspections. Of course, there was an offset, as Jackie mentioned, in revenues. So again, we always, one thing, government audits are a little tricky to see sometimes, is that we separately report revenues from expenditures. We don't always look at the net right on top of each other. So you have to kind of match those two up and see. So there's a reason we are over budget, and that's because we had more revenue. We just had more work in front of us, right? So obviously, that expenditure might look a little different if we were fully staffed in that department as well. You wouldn't necessarily staff up, you might have some overtime and that kind of stuff, but it wouldn't be quite as extreme as we saw this last go around here. The Water Fund, if you could go there, Jackie. I think it's always interesting to see, you know, as she mentioned, we didn't sell as much water last year because people didn't use as much water because it was not as dry here as it was before. And I always want to point out to people that you notice that the operating expenses didn't really go down, even though we used a lot less water. And that's because the cost of a gallon of water by itself, the intrinsic cost of it, is very, very little compared to what we sell it for. But that's because the majority of our costs are Dave's folks, right? Running around, checking hydrants, flushing hydrants, keeping the water system up and running, manning the water plants and all that kind of stuff. And that work does not really increase or decrease based on how much water we sell. We pump a million gallons, 10 million gallons. It's roughly the same amount of work to run that system. So even though we sell more or less, the work doesn't go up or down. So I know that sometimes people look at that operating income and go, zippers, we're over-budgeting here, we should, overcharging, we should really dial that down. I assure you that this is reasonable because you win some and you lose some. In the overall scheme of things, you look at a 10- or 20-year trend line and say, how are we doing? And the other thing I wanted to point out about the water, and then we can cross over into sewer as well, is that operating income is a bit of a misnomer because we don't have capital funds in the water and sewer like we do in the general fund that hide those ups and downs of big-time expenditures on infrastructure. And so we have to have an income to build our fund balance so that we can afford those larger projects. In the general fund, we don't want to as often, you know, see that fund balance grow as much as we do here because we have a capital fund designated for those big expenditures. So we're not like, quote-unquote, "saving up" for something in the general fund as often as we are here in the water and sewer funds. So those are my commentary. Anything come out of that for you?
Nope, nothing to add.
Thanks for pointing those items out, Mark. Any other questions?
I guess there's a follow-up question, Mark, on the water and sewer funds. Those operating incomes, are they in alignment with what we've budgeted then as we look to continue investing in infrastructure?
Yeah, again, it's, you know, could you really say we're, you know, plus or minus 50,000 where we should be? It's a little tougher to say because it is more of a long game. But yes, I think those are healthy operating incomes that can, are in line with our capital fund, our capital plan, I should say.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else interested in making a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the 2024 audit presentation as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great, thanks for your work, and also Jessica and Kim, thank you for your work on it as well. 8B, consulting contract classification and comprehensive study. Mark.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think you folks are aware that we've been talking about for quite some time, completing a classification and compensation study for our staff. It's been about a decade or so. It's about the right interval where we want to kind of recheck ourselves towards the market in regard to our wages and how we classify our employees. So in general, what most governmental agencies do is they sort of score each job, give it a point value based on the sort of responsibilities of the job, the education and experience required for it, the technical nature of the job, the sort of the difficulties of that. And then weight all those jobs in terms of their score against each other and then against the market. And one of the reasons we do this is because of the Pay Equity Act here in Minnesota, which requires us to report in on that and make sure that we're paying jobs which are heavily trending towards one gender or another, making sure that those are paid equitably across those genders. The scoring of these jobs helps us kind of level that playing field and make sure that we're, when we're forced to compare apples to oranges, we can compare, you know, on a different level. We're comparing fruit by the end of this thing, right? So it can be difficult comparing those items because they're not necessarily alike. So it can be difficult comparing those items because they're, they're not necessarily alike in exactly what they do. So this is again, this is our chance to recapture our classifications of our jobs and the compensation afforded to those and, and check those against the market and make sure that we're within where we want to be with the market. So the end result of this will be some recommendations, and I want to stress that those are just that, they're recommendations. There's nothing sort of binding about this. You don't have to follow any of the recommendations. I would certainly hope we will take a look at them and make our own decisions. But what we're going to be doing is taking those and then sort of looking at, okay, let's say we're, we, the, overall, we're, we're five percent lower than the market. We'll have a, a question before us, is do we want to be in the middle of the market? Do we want to be, some cities might choose to be at the sixtieth percentile of the market. Some people might choose to be at the fortieth percentile. Where, maybe we choose a range, we want to be within this and that. So this is up to you. The, the, the report will give us that range and that feeling of where we're at, and then we'll make those decisions going forward in terms of how to implement this. There'll be a phased approach to this as well, since our contracts aren't all up at the same time. We have some union contracts that will be up at the end of two thousand and twenty-five, and we'll want to make sure that we have this information in front of us as we negotiate those contracts and, and some council direction based on that. The other contracts, we may, you know, choose to wait until those are expiring and then work this into the negotiation for the next contract. So there'll be an ability to phase it in so that if there is a major movement in one direction or another, we have an opportunity to phase that in that it doesn't come as a shock to our budget or a shock to our employees. Beyond that, I just want to thank a newly-formed labor management committee that we formed with a cross-section of the folks employed here from the various unions and non-union positions. And we got together and we tasked that committee with reviewing six proposals out of the thirteen that we received. And they came up with some scoring on those proposals, gave that recommendation to myself and Jolene, and we conferred and checked some references, called the project managers, did our due diligence, and came up with the recommendation for, to hire McGrath. So any questions on that? I'd be happy to answer.
Quick question, the Pay Equity Act, how often does that act require us to do this sort of work?
We're required to report in every three years. This particular type of report isn't, quote-unquote, "required." Most cities, I will say, use a third party at some point. I would say it's customary. It's not, ten years isn't a rule, I don't believe anywhere. It's, I would just say it's customary, about every ten years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I think as, as the job market is, gets more and more competitive, it's, it's just good to have this and it's money well-spent so that we can be fair with our, with our, you know, employees and, and we know where we stand with everyone else. So with that, is anyone willing to make a motion?
Make a motion, authorize the execution of a, a contract for the classification and compensation study with McGrath Human Resources Group at a cost of not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Eight C, eighty-two forty-one North Shore Trail On-Street Parking, Abby.
Thank you. In two thousand and seven, the city of Forest Lake granted a conditional use permit and variance request for the expansion of existing non-conforming structure at eighty-two forty-one North Shore Trail. Even though at the time the city council determined that this would bring the property into a more conforming status, I think arguably, since the reconstruction of that site, there's been problems related to the neighborhood and parking in the area. I wasn't here, so I don't know that exactly, but I've heard that from many different people. In late two thousand and three, Pizza Pub began operations utilizing that, that historic conditional use permit. And not immediately, but fairly soon after, we started receiving complaints about the on-street parking, parking in the boulevard. When we did receive these and they came in through the zoning, our kind of planning zoning offices, according to the use permit and their variance approvals and the code, there's no zoning code violations. In essence, we had the general public parking along a shoulder. So there was kind of little we could do. We did post no parking signs. We said, "Hey, please don't do that." But we also were in the middle last year, yes, through twenty-four, of spinning up a new code enforcement program. So again, when complaints started coming in in two thousand and twenty-five, kind of came to the same conclusion that there really wasn't code violations related to the use of the property. However, this spring, the landowner did change the status of the boulevard by laying down some aggregate material that did trigger a number of city code violations. It did trigger the zoning code violations, but also stormwater, parking, some of those things. So we did provide notice to the landowner that there were violations of the code, and even though it was on the deadline date, the landowner did reach out to us to start discussing compliance. After the meeting internally, staff started to talk about what are some options through here that could be a potential consideration of the city to help reduce some of the public nuisance, public safety concerns in the area. Included in your packet were two designs that were developed by the city engineering department. I can pull them up. I don't, I only have the JPEG images that are in your staff report, so I'll kind of zoom in on them. But the first scenario is kind of officially, potentially, is the current configuration of how people are kind of parking out on North Shore right now. Be twelve parking spaces at a cost of thirty-one thousand dollars that would essentially be able to mimic what's there, but potentially on an improved parking service. The other alternative that we just explored is whether or not we could get off-street, on-street, excuse me, parallel parking in this area. And our engineering department was able to determine that we can get those spaces in, and that would be at a tune of twenty thousand dollars. I'll come back to these. I just want to use the staff report for reference. So with this scenario, we've discussed the alternatives, reached out to the landowner, asked them of their interest in rectifying the code violations, public safety concerns. The landowner did indicate they're interested in working with the city if the city is favorable to putting in improved parking adjacent to their property and has asked if the city is favorable to this, the city would consider a fifty-fifty cost share. He further asked for the ability to assess his portion onto his taxes over a time period. So there's really a few things the council kind of needs to consider in a request of this nature. The first is whether or not the city council's interested in doing a change order request to the North Shore Trail roadway parking project, or roadway project. This would be the opportunity, an opportunity, if we wanted to pave parking along North Shore Trail in this location. Now, it could be a very reasonable time to put that in, given the fact that the North Shore Trail project is occurring. If you're willing to entertain that change order request to add in on-street parking, you should discuss the landowner's requests to pay for half those costs. So I do note in my staff report, while argument could be made that the on-street parking would be of a benefit to the private landowner. Staff could argue that we have had public nuisance problems here for a long time. Now, for the short feud, short history, the public's been parking in this area and likely we're just spitting those parking problems elsewhere if we didn't consider this. Then if the council is favorable to an amendment to the North Shore Trail project, doesn't matter at least at the moment of who would be paying for it, but the preferred design of the on-street parking. I noticed, I note in my staff report, the current angled parking presents a significant public safety concern. Vehicles backing out onto North Shore, as well as vehicles having to kind of edge out and around them on the driveways, is very concerning, though we don't have records to indicate if there have been vehicular incidences. It doesn't sound like there have been. I did request a report with PD. I didn't get it in time before the meeting. It sounds like there's a lot in near misses. The other thing is if that angled parking is installed, in order to get those vehicles off the fog line, that parking would have to be almost right up to the existing curb line of the parking lot. So kind of straddling over the private property. And that really presents a drainage issue through there because we wouldn't be able to accommodate for the drainage for this new parking in that kind of buffer area. If we looked at the parallel parking, the vehicles could be well off the fog line, thereby helping increase kind of some of those sightlines coming out of the driveways. It could also accommodate for drainage in the area. And then lastly, if you're favorable to a change order, and if you can determine if there's a design, we do need to discuss ongoing maintenance obligations for the on-street parking in this area. It would become public parking. But staff has, would really encourage the council to consider an agreement with the private landowner for their at-least wintertime maintenance. Our plow trucks have to go through there. They're going to get the lane of travel, but they're not going to get that parking area. And so they would have to turn around somewhere. Ideally, we don't want these, our vehicles, our infrastructure turning around in a private parking lot. But it's just going to delay the snow removal services on, on North Shore. So generally speaking, staff's favorable to the city's consideration of this. It's not common for the city to consider adding on-street parking for a private benefit, but there would be public benefits for the installation of this on-street parking in this area if it was privately maintained, parallel parking. So my recommendation is to discuss this. If you're favorable, and that's an if, then there is a motion in there to authorize staff to do the things necessary for the council to formally approve the on-street parking in this area. Much of this would have to be back, brought back before you, agreements, change orders, those sorts of things. But my first and foremost recommendation is discuss this matter. Let's see where, where you're thinking about it. And you already saw on your open forum signup list, David Swan is here and he's accompanied by Aaron and Ray Bar. They're both from Pizza Pub. If you have questions of them or if you have questions of me.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any questions at this point?
Well, I think it's several. If we don't move forward with a change order request, and what's the intention, bring it back to turf?
Yeah, the landowner would need to restore it back to turf.
So what would the probability be that the time, as soon as that sod's firmed up, that people won't be parking on it again?
That is, I mean, that is the risk that we do end up running is that the issue would just be reoccurring and happen again. It really does come down to a parking enforcement matter through here. And so if the council would not be favorable to improving this for parking, then I think we need some good clear direction about the enforcement of parking through this area.
It was posted no parking before, so.
What's, with the, the, the parallel parking design, what's to stop people from angle parking anyway? Would there be curbing gutters so that it would be kind of pretty hard to angle park in there?
There would not be curbing gutter in the area. It would be probably striped and signed. They also would have to visibly park off of asphalt over that kind of asphalted line.
Mark, is there any, if we were to go forward with this, is there any watershed district things we need to be thinking about?
We believe we can stay underneath the threshold for, for watershed issues, yeah. Now, I would, yeah, just echo the, the idea that if it's restored to turf, whether, whether it's restored to turf or it's made parallel, we need to clarify, if it's not already clear, that parking is not allowed. If it's turf, parking is not allowed in a diagonal direction if it's parallel striped. And just, we need to begin enforcement of that then. You know, I, I don't think we can, it's not a great scenario, I think, as you're alluding to, that to go back to turf and continue to allow this laissez-faire, not sure if there's a code violation or not, you know, should we enforce? I think we just need to be clear, there's something that says no parking, we're not going to allow parking.
Abby, what's the concern future, for, for future landowners, our concern on our part for future landowners? If the landowner is willing to take on the cleaning of the snow, how do we convey that then into the covenants or whatever so that the next landowner knows this, it's on them to clean that out?
We would record that against the property, so then future property owners, heirs, successors, signs, all of that would be responsible for that. Can't always be guaranteed that people, you know, have a full title search, but that would be conveyed the minute we find that it's not being maintained.
Any other questions?
Concerned with public utilities and all that other stuff that lies underneath there as far as parking on that, maintenance and things like that, I think is a concern.
Is there, is there public utilities that, underneath that area that we're aware of?
I believe the utilities around the north, north side of the road, towards Main and Sanicree Line, there's their utilities going across the parking lot through there.
Okay.
Private utilities, I'm sure there's gas and power, gas and power.
Okay, so would you like to add anything to this, Dave or Aaron?
No, I don't have, I guess she said that pretty much, knowing that, I mean, we could, speaking from Jerry, I know that we'll be able to keep up with, like, plowing the snow during, during time and stuff like that.
Ma'am, excuse me, could you step up to the podium just so that we can get a clear record of what you're saying? Thank you so much.
No, I was just saying, when it comes to the removal of like the snow and stuff like that, we as the company, the landowner, will take, like, do that for you guys in recognition of that.
Okay. And you're in diff, you're willing to do either the, I mean, you're, I assume your first request would be the para, the diagonal, the diagonal and then?
Well, diagonal, but if we can come down to the parallel, we'll do the parallel too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Miller?
Aaron, I have a question for you if you don't mind. Can you tell me, where do all the employees park currently?
In that area where the asphalt was put or the, where the turf used to be, that's where employees park, but, or like in the parking lot, they'll park too.
So how many employees do you have at any given time?
During the weekdays, we have, during the day, anywhere from like three to four. Nighttime is like six to ten, and then when you get to the weekends, I mean, we have up to like twenty to thirty employees.
So that would potentially be twenty to thirty spots that are being taken by your employees?
Yes, correct.
Is there any place else your employees can park besides in your parking lot?
No, that we haven't decided on anything like that or anything.
What made you decide to pave, or I'm sorry, to put down the class-five rock in that area currently that doesn't allow for that?
I can't answer that one.
Was that your decision?
It was not my decision.
Was that?
It's the landowner's decision.
Okay, so the person who owns the land and the building that you lease from?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say two other things. I do really enjoy Pizza Pub and Pizza Prime over in Blaine. They're all really good, and the one in Forest Lake, so, and I, I think you own a number of them, so. But it definitely is a real issue there for parking. You know, the previous owner, Aqua, when they owned it, they used to have a shuttle service, and they would have people park over at the boat launch in the parking lot over there, and they would shuttle people back and forth. Have you considered something like that to alleviate some of your parking problems?
We have not, no.
Having some sort of a, maybe a valet service?
I mean, it's been talked about, but we haven't like put it into effect or anything. I mean, it's been talked about, but we haven't like put it into effect or anything like that.
During the week, do you find you have major issues with the parking, or mainly weekends?
Mainly like Thursday through Sunday.
Have you considered talking to any of the homeowners across the street, or around the corner from there, to see if you could pick up a piece of land from them, or, or some, some area from them that you could have maybe additional parking?
Have not.
Would you consider that?
I would.
Okay. So, I think first, couple of questions here, well, actually, I have a question. Complaints continue, were they, right when it first opened, there was more, when I drive by there, initially, there just seemed like there was just a lot more of an issue when I drive by there, even during the weekend. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of parking on the streets, so has that complaint been about the same, or?
I'd say the, the complaints are generated from a frequent few, and those complaints are coming up just consistently when there may be issues. They've subsided in the last month or so, since they knew that we were kind of working through these conversations about exploring alternative options. I think there's been a number of residents that have stopped because they don't necessarily think their complaints are, you know, isn't changing the circumstance in any way.
So we have a couple of things here. First, I guess the first question is, are we interested in doing the change order at all? That would be our first question, and if there's a consensus at all, or thoughts?
I am, just from the standpoint that, I mean, it's a thriving local business, so we want to, I think as a city, support any way we can, within reason, you know, short of, you know, police patrol being out there on the regular, I suspect that should we not do something to motivate people to move in a right, safer direction, we'll end up back, right back here where we've been. So my, my interest is in exploring that change order, change order in the favor of the parallel parking.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm not interested in exploring that option personally. I think we would be adding to a existing problem that's not ever going to get better unless they do something completely different. And that's why I mentioned, maybe there's an option with talking to some of the landowners that are there. If the city was going to contribute to a business, I don't know if that's the right path to go down either, in terms of funding some of their, their challenges. They knew what the challenges were when they, when they got in there, but I would rather see the city spend money to help them build a safer strip of parking, maybe somewhere else, across the road or something, or down, down, anywhere else other than right there. I think North Shore is such a terribly unsafe road to begin with, in my opinion, and just even when I saw those horizontal backing parking spots, I was like, there's going to be an accident out here. Now, I don't know if there has been, but I would swear there's going to be, because when you're backing out, especially with cars on each side of you, you can't see either way, and it, it's just a terrible nightmare. Now, the parallel parking, I could see where that would be okay, but it's only six spots. I don't think that's helping with the problem. I think there's a lot of things they can do. They mentioned, they have employees that park there. Employees could park somewhere else. They could work out something with their employees to park somewhere else. Maybe they go park over in the DNR lot, or maybe we work out something and, and park elsewhere. That could free up 10, 10 spots a night, six spots a night, especially on the weekends, 20 spots potentially. I know it's hard, because you got to have your employees, so I'm not trying to say it be mean, but I think it's a real, personally, I think it's a real safety issue there, and I don't, I don't think we should, Ms. Young said it earlier, I don't think we should reward bad, bad behavior. On planning, when we were on planning, I mean, this has been an issue for a long time, and, and we never allowed it in the past. We tried to always stay away from it, but that's just my thought.
So you oppose regardless, cost share or not, you oppose regardless, and design regardless?
I don't like the design, but I don't think it should be a cost share thing either, personally.
If I could, Councilmember Miller, if, if it was parallel parking and no city cost share, would that be something you would be amenable to?
Again, it isn't necessarily the, the cost share. I think there, there are times when we should cost share. It is more of a safety thing for me. I don't think six extra spots is going to get them anything other than what we have now. Still a problem with parking on the street, in my opinion.
I'd have to agree with Councilmember Miller on that, and I don't, I think there's plenty of parking there at the time, and if they were utilize the parking within the lot also beforehand, I just don't think it's a good idea to have cars parked out there on the right of way. I'm a strong believer in that as well.
I mean, have we had like the engineers or anyone look at, I mean, is there any way that parking lot can be redesigned?
There's just not space. I, I looked at that twelve ways to Sunday, it just, it, it's maximized, it's maxed out there. I, I think we even, I think there's even a variance to the parking lot setback. Abby, is that correct already, to allow for the parking lot to be as big as it is?
Yes, that we allow the parking lot to be closer to the right of way, to be able to accommodate kind of the two lanes on the, two traffic adjacent to the roadway.
While she's doing that, just a couple of comments, I appreciate the two councilmembers' opposition. I, I do understand your position. I, I think while the six spots certainly won't solve the problem, I think it's a step in the right direction. I do think the safety concerns are real, there is no safe way to park on, along the road. I do think the parallel spots would be reasonably safe, I think the diagonal is a, a nonstarter for me. I know Ryan, our, our city engineer as well, had some serious concerns with that, and our public safety folks as well. You know, Chief Peterson was not favorable to that idea either. So I, I, I think, a couple of things also is that I don't know that we want to have an arrangement where we're relying on the DNR lot as a, a backup either. I think that's something we haven't discussed with them, and not sure if that's...
That's technically probably not a legal place either.
Probably not allowed, right, yeah. The DNR has the purpose for that lot, and it's not for pizza parking. I, I do think, certainly you make valid points, Councilmember Miller, about the need for the landowner to look elsewhere to solve their problem, and, and get creative with, you know, shuttle solutions or whatever like that. I think we should, I think the two things can be mutually exclusive. I think the city could construct this parking and request that, you know, I think what, what you're doing here is, if you were to construct the six parallel spots, and, you know, we can talk funding later, whether you fund any of it or not, you could also then say, with this, we're going to become much more strict in enforcing parking rules, so you should make sure that you get that straightened out, because we're not going to, we're going to be ticketing people who park along the road where it's, so no parking, and we're not going to be, you know, lenient about that. So I think there's a yes and probability here. I think, I think you can do this and also not reward bad behavior, so to speak, that you can get, get a little stricter with enforcement of parking, to make sure that the parking that's done is done as safely as possible. One of the things that Ryan and I looked at with the parallel spots is that normally a, a parallel parking spot is eight feet wide, and usually you end up with a two-foot gutter pan as well, so you have a 10-foot from fog line to curb. In this case, we're not going to have curb necessarily, but what we'd like to do is make that a little bit wider than the eight-foot minimum, say more like 12 feet, so that you have a bit of a, an area there to maneuver. It won't be, you'll, you'll still need to, someone coming eastbound will still have to, or southbound, everyone, think of it, would still need to maneuver around someone parking, but would have a little bit of wiggle room, so that there is some of that buffer between fog line and the person actually parking. There is enough room there to accommodate that, so that we're not right up on the fog line with the parked cars, so that when you swing your door out, you're not into the fog line, right, if that makes any sense. So, but again, appreciate both of your opinions, and, and not trying to be argumentative in any way, shape, or form, but I think I see an opportunity to, to make the situation better, and be in a very strong position to draw a line in the sand and say, this is that we can't tolerate illegal parking.
Abby, could you go back to that greater view of the area? So is there street parking allowed on Inman and 224th?
That's what I was going to ask. It's not posted, right, is it?
On Inman?
Inman, yeah.
On Inman, it's no parking, and it's quite a ways up on 224th where there's a no parking. So it's quite a, quite a distance to walk to the pub.
Well, I was thinking the Pizza Pub needs to get a really cool golf cart to pick up there.
So that's not, it's not posted no parking?
It's posted no parking.
Yeah, I would assume that is over, avoid the overflow from the, the rant, the launch.
Yeah. And it's my understanding that the previous, like the Aqua group, they did pursue private property for parking, and they, they found nothing in the area.
I, I think they were using some up off of 224th, which is now developed. There was an open field there, that, that, that area's developed, and so they were using, my understanding, they were using that. So, I, you know, so my thought on this is, is pretty similar to Mark's. I think, you know, we've got kind of a bad situation here, we've got a major road project coming through there, it's the opportunity for the city to fix this and make it better than it is, it's not going to be perfect. I would also advocate for them to, to continue to look for some of those offsite parking situations, especially on busy weekends, holiday weekends. I, I think doing the parallel is a much safer, and so I, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. The cost share part, I'm, I'm indifferent at this point. I, I don't know, is that a decision you need tonight, preferably?
I mean, I think it's going to help inform the decision of the owner, you know.
How many parking spaces do you have in your lot, sir?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and Mark, do we, on the north side of the road, how, how much is city easement or city-owned property there?
Yeah, as you can see on the image that's on the screen, the black line would be the, the right-of-way line, so yeah, the one Abby's pointing to there.
Yep.
So, I don't know if you're going down the direction of, could we put any more parallel parking on that side, or?
No, I was thinking, could we move the road a little bit?
Sure.
Could, what, if, if we're redoing the road, and, and now I'm starting to think, you know, can we adjust the road slightly? Obviously, if these people are being, you know, I guess, uncooperative, trying to help us solve a problem, we have the right to, to, to do that. Maybe we move the road a little bit that way, and put more of a, a safe lane in there where those cars are going to be parked, and give us more room. where those cars are gonna be parked, uh, and give us more room.